So, thank you, everyone. Welcome to the first remote meeting of the Arlington School Committee. As a preliminary matter, I have some things to read written by the town council. Thanks to Doug Heim for putting all this together for us. I'm Len Carden, Chair of the Arlington School Committee. Please permit me to confirm that all members in person anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. That is a requirement of the open meeting law modification for remote meeting. So let me go through the list. Mr. Hayner.
Present.
Ms. Morgan.
Present.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
Present.
Ms. Seuss.
Yep, hi, present.
Mr. Schlickman. Mr. Schlickman, you're muted, sorry.
Present, present, present.
Mr. Thielman.
Present.
And staff members. Dr. Bodie.
Present.
Dr. McNeil.
Present.
Mr. Mason.
Present.
Mr. Spiegel.
Present.
Ms. Elmer.
Present.
And Ms. Fitzgerald, you were here earlier. That's great, thank you. So, good morning, good afternoon, good evening. This open meeting of the Arlington School Committee is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, that the public can follow along with the deliberation to the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless public participation is required by law. It's not required by law, but we do allow public participation by our policy, which I'll get to in a minute. For this meeting, the Arlington School Committee is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town website, identifying how the public may join. And we're also being broadcast by ACMI. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen, share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the Novus Agenda dashboard and the public can follow along through the town website. So now, some ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, as the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. For each agenda item or subitem, I will go down the line of members of the committee inviting each by name to provide comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. And as I said, if there's some urgent need to be recognized, please either raise your hand in Zoom or wave at me or if necessary, just unmute and interrupt. And hopefully, we will have a well-run meeting. We're following these rules. So, for the first item in the agenda, before I want to open the meeting first by acknowledging that the very stark circumstances facing the world, our country and our community, I want to thank all the doctors, nurses, healthcare professionals, all the fire police, EMS, and other first responders, and all of the essential employees in our grocery stores, pharmacies, and other essential providers for all that they are doing at this time. I also want to thank our district teachers, administrators, custodians, and support staff for all of their efforts as well. Our first item on the agenda is public participation. Because of the remote nature of this meeting, we did request that comments be emailed in advance. But Karen, unless you've received any in the last few minutes, I don't believe we've received any, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
But because this is our first meeting this way, and in case people did not see that item, I will see if there's anyone wanting to speak now. So if you would like to speak, we do allow up to three minutes, for a total of 20 minutes for public participation. If there's anybody who would want to speak, please go off mute and take turns stating your name, and I'll make a list. Is there anyone for public participation? All right. All right, great, thanks. So, the first item is Sorry?
Hi, my name is Neil and I'm a parent of a student. Is this the right time to participate?
Sure. So, let me just check if there's anybody else besides Neil. This will be your last chance, anyone else besides Neil?
This is Lynette Martin, I raised my hand, I don't know if you're using the
Oh, yeah, sorry. Okay, yep. So Lynette and Neil, great. All right, so Neil, why don't you go ahead first? And again, three minutes and start when you'd like.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, we're dealing with a very serious situation and it's unprecedented. I have a daughter who goes to Gibbs and we see the enrichment material on the website. But I was wondering, in terms of using Zoom, if that's possible for the teachers just to do review material or go over enrichment material? You know, we're using it now, I'm using it, I'm working from home, I use it for my work meetings. I think that will help with a sense of security for the students to see their teachers and interact, if possible. And just for a short time, maybe 20 minutes for each core class. And I think that will help maintain a schedule. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Great, thank you, and I'm sorry, can you just give us your full name for the minutes? Neil?
Yes, Neil Saunders.
Neil Saunders, great, thank you. All right, and the next one is Lynette Martin, go ahead.
Sorry, I was on mute. Hi, Lynette Martin. I was wondering if we'll be sending out a technology survey, like I've seen done in some surrounding communities such as Somerville. I want to make sure that, you know, I know that there was an offer for Chromebooks, which was great, but I feel like a lot of the turnaround for this stuff has been quick and I'm just wondering what supports our families need and want to make sure that everybody has access to the enrichment materials. I know that there are some Asili families in Arlington that have very limited access to email, only on cellphones and stuff, and I'm wondering what we're doing to communicate with and reach out to these families. That's all, thanks for everything, I'm sure you guys are going through right now and doing. So, also just appreciation, thank you.
Great, all right, thank you all, thank you both. And so the first item on our agenda is, of course, the COVID-19 update. We have a few subitems that we had asked Dr. Bodie to be ready to address, the first one being meal distribution. But Dr. Bodie, if you want to give an overall update or however you want to handle it, please go ahead. But you're on mute, sorry. Dr. Bodie, you're on mute.
Okay, got it. Well, thank you, and thank you for the appreciations of all of you, to the people who are out there, you know, working on our behalf and also thanking the administrators and teachers. It has been an unprecedented time, as we all know. It's a time when we're all sort of struggling to manage all of the different things that are in our lives, including the kinds of meetings that we're doing remotely and all of the communication often take a lot more time than we were used to having people together. Let me begin with talking about just sort of an overall view of where we are philosophically and then get into a lot of the nitty-gritty questions that people have had. And I've had parents email me also with questions, which I will hopefully be able to address, including our two speakers this evening. This has been unprecedented. And one of the things that the commissioner has said and we have said is that it's not really possible to replicate what goes on in schools every day. The connection between teachers and students, the supports that are offered to our students, the connections, the school lunches and breakfasts we offer. While some of this has been able to be replicated in some respects, it is not that we are in school in a remote learning environment. There have been a lot of conversation, both in the media and in emails, about whether schools should be trying to do that, trying to do a replication in having schedules for students. There are 12 districts that have been in very close communication over the last couple of weeks. And this week, we put out a joint statement talking about our philosophy around school closure with an emphasis on trying to maintain the connections between student, teacher, which is very special and important to students, as well as looking at how we can promote and continue remote learning. Now, I think one of the things that has been a little bit confusing is the term "remote learning", what does that mean? Today, the commissioner gave the Department of Education's recommendations for how to support student learning and holistic needs. And the one thing that they emphasize in this document is that we're not going to replicate and that remote learning should be looked at from a variety of ways. Some things that teachers have students connect to in terms of learning activities, things that the students pursue on their own, reading, of course, physical activity. There's a range of things that the Department of Education is encouraging districts to do to promote remote learning. That's not the same thing as continuing in classes the way we have been before, advancing the curriculum. And I think that one of the underlying principles of this is the issue of equity. And Ms. Martin alluded to that in her comments, that we have a lot of families who are not able to equally access all the materials that we have available. They do not have the technology at home to do that and something that we have been addressing, which I will speak to. But remote learning is, from the point of view of the Department of Education, even in today's document and the view of all of these districts that have been working together, is that what we need to do right now is to promote deeper learning and practice of concepts that have already been learned. And there's certainly much that can be done there, as well as provide enrichment exercises so that students can continue their learning and be able, at the end of this time that we are in closure, to be able to come back into a regular school setting as we've had. Now, that's where we are right now. You know, the governor has now had schools closed until May 1st. We will be returning on May 4th. That's where we are today. And we are planning, as a district, to meet our students' needs during this period of closure. So I will talk to a number of the questions that have been asked. But let me start with the issue of equity and what we're doing for students who cannot necessarily access. We have put a technology distribution plan in place. We went very quickly last weekend so that we would be able to push these computers out for people as fast as possible. We had over 400 people sign up to get a computer for some technical reasons. Some people did not get some follow-up information as to where to go. We had about 60 people that did not pick up a computer. We are going to have another distribution and certainly the people who have already signed the loaner agreement will be able to get a computer. We're probably looking at next Wednesday, though that's not hard and fast at the moment. And as well as people who still need some devices at home in order for students to be able to access different resources. So that will be happening and another invitation will be sent out to all parents again tomorrow. Now, to the point, if some parents may have issues with understanding, we try to do some translation for parents. We've done reach out, our office has called a number of parents to make sure that they are getting emails and if they understood what was what was being said in the emails. I know that different principals have been reaching out and calling families as well. And that kind of outreach will continue as we go forward. So, we do know that, for example, at the elementary level, we have only really one parent who does not have email access and we've already talked with that family. But that's not a good indicator of whether they have adequate internet or access to devices. So this outreach will continue so that we can maximize it for families. But then there's other issues too with equity. Some students in our schools, when they have any kind of a learning activity, get a lot of support from teachers, from teaching assistants. And that type of support is not as readily, in fact, it's very difficult to provide online, though I can tell you a little bit more about that in my presentation. But there are also children that are living where parents are working at home and it's very difficult for them to be able to say at 10:30, "We're going to be on a particular call." In fact, teachers that have been doing this are reporting probably half or less of the class is able to come on to those conversations. So what we have been looking at is having much more asynchronous types of outreach involving students. Meaning by that is that if we were to put a resource up or a video up, we want it to be able to be accessed at any point in the day, not at a specific time. Let me address the issue of what's the other one? The issue of the Zoom meetings. I will have to say, there has been a continuum of outreach by teachers. There have been some teachers who have been doing a lot of outreach and there's been teachers that have not been doing a lot of outreach. In fact, I've had a couple of parents say, "I haven't heard from my teacher." And so we span that range. And as now we've finished these two weeks that we've had, which came on very quickly, we recognize that and we were, over the last week, we've been working on providing resources for parents, making sure we have lunches for our students that need them, making sure that we get computers distributed, certainly encouraging that outreach. We put on our website, mental health links and resources. We have created an FAQ, frequently asked questions for parents. We have reached out to parents who have emailed us that they can't, once they got the computer, they didn't know how to log on to the computer. We've provided those instructions, we've talked directly with some of those families. So there's been a lot that's been going on. Now, as we end this two weeks, we are looking at next week and being much more explicit about outreach, about contact with students and assignments for students. So, and this has been supported by the teachers' union. They very much want to also have teachers remain in good relationships with their students. In fact, if I was to say that I heard anything more this last two weeks is concern always expressed by teachers, administrators, and other support people about the welfare of our students. I do want people to know that, that this is really on everyone's mind and trying to adapt to an environment that I think none of us expected was going to be like this. And we're all trying very hard to support each other, to care for each other, and to make sure that our students continue in learning and continue to feel supported. Sorry, to support each other, to care for each other, and to make sure that our students continue in learning and continue to feel supported. So next week, there will be some changes. I will be writing parents tomorrow about some of the things that they can expect. And one, of course, is going to be that there's going to be explicit that teachers can reach out and should reach out and there's going to be a variety of ways that that can happen. Our first speaker tonight mentioned Gibbs and the Zoom meetings that have been going on. There have been Zoom meetings going on throughout the whole district. And one of the things that our IT department is concerned about are a lot of the privacy issues around Zoom that we are going to be addressing. So for the moment, we're not going to continue Zoom, but we do have Google Hangout, which is very similar to Zoom, which is part of our Google suite. And while we're not mandating that teachers use the Google Hangout, it is certainly a tool that they can use. But what we are doing is that we are doing some crash courses for teachers who do not use Google Classroom as a way that they communicate with students, that that is going to be expected of all teachers and teaching students in grades three to 12. We've already had a lot of teachers sign up for professional development today and there will be some tomorrow and then a Monday. It's a much more common tool that you see at the secondary level, but not as well-used at the elementary level. So what parents can expect from that is that we will be reaching out to let them know what Google Classroom is, how to access it. And students in those grades, from grades three to 12, all have a SpyPonder email. Our students pre-K to 2 do not. They have a way to get onto the system, but they do not have an email account. So students access the Google Classroom through their email address. It is something that's very common using, as I said, in Gibbs, Odison, and certainly the high school. So, the other kind of feedback I've had from parents is that all the resources you put on the website are just overwhelming. I don't know what activity to pull for my second grader or for my eighth grader, what math review exercises should I be doing? And the intention of this is a resource that is not chronological in terms of concept taught. You know, in terms of differentiating instruction, there may be some students that need a particular skill reinforced and others a different one. So the whole panoply of resources are there and available. But we hear what parents are saying, they're not educators, they're not sure what to do. So one of the things that will happen next week is that teachers will be suggesting particular activities by their grade, by their discipline, and asking students to do some learning activities that they will, the products of which they would upload and teachers would give feedback on. So I think you're going to see next week a lot more direction in terms of the resources that are available. It's also possible that teams of teachers at a grade level or in a discipline, at some shared course, will also potentially create some content, again, that's enrichment or focused on deepening the learning of already taught skills. We are not advancing the curriculum at this point. I'm not saying that that may not happen down the road, but that's not where we are at the moment, nor is it where the Department of Education is suggesting districts adhere to. All right. Let me go get your notes here of the different things you want me to address. The one of the things you wanted to know was about the supply, do we have enough computers, the Chromebooks, to distribute? The answer is yes. The Chromebooks that have been distributed were clean before they were distributed and they were also, people were given a charging cord for them as well. But I think, I don't know, some people opened it and just didn't know how to get on. So I think that has been cleared up at this point, though I suspect with more distribution, there are going to still be more technology questions. And we will put some more FAQs about that. There are some right now on the district enrichment website. When I first started, I was talking about the issue of equitability for students that often need support as part of being able to learn in school. One of the things that we're going to be doing more of is, it already is on the website, is having more collaboration about when an assignment goes out, that any accommodations that might be appropriate or we could give online, we will do. If you go on the district enrichment site right now, you will see that certain suggested activities will be accompanied by some kind of an accommodation, such as a graphic organizer. To the extent that we can, we will provide as much support as we possibly can. Another question had to do with will the outreach to parents? Are we going to need to buy more Chromebooks? Well, we have the answer, a short answer, that is yes. We're going to buy more Chromebooks because Capital Planning Committee is allocating money for next year and we have a cycle that we go through in terms of upgrading computers. Right now, we are still giving a Chromebook to the students in grades K to 2. We debated whether we would give iPads out, we are doing that for preschool. But parents of students in K to 2 are going to help to help them get on. But we thought that the power of the Chromebook would be preferable to what we could give students in the way of an iPad. And so we've decided to make that adjustment. But I will be perfectly honest and say that our K2 students have had very little experience with that and will need some support. We will revisit this if we find that parents are finding this is challenging for them. But, and in all these things, it's a fluid situation. Some things change by the hour, certainly by the day, as we move forward and we learn from things and try to improve upon what we've been doing. So, let me see, I think those are the main points that I wanted to say right now. But I will also say that for parents, there is an FAQ on the website. And we are happy, if you send questions, we're always trying to update that. And you can even tell if, when you open it, it will say it's updated a particular day and you'll know what the new material is. And, and you can even tell when you open it, what it'll say is updated a particular day, and you'll know what the new material is. So let me just open it now, because I'm sure there's probably a lot of questions, some things I may not have addressed that you'd like to hear more about. And I will unmute.
All right, great. Thank you for all that. As I said, we'll go through the order we've sort of normally do at the table. So starting, I, also, I wanted to mention that Mr. Levy from the AEA had notified me that he was not going to be able to participate tonight. So he is not on. But Mr. Hayner, you're, you're up first.
Thank you. Dr. Bodie, could you, I don't know if it's possible, could you address the, you made a statement about problems with either security or privacy with regard to Zoom? Can you talk about that, or is that something that you can't talk?
Oh, just a little bit. I mean, what I can say is this, what we have done this year is enter into individual contracts with any of our apps. So any apps that we offer, we know that the, the student's data is protected. Now Zoom has a, will not sign that, but they have, they have on their website where you can sort of agree to their privacy agreement. So we are looking into that. Under federal law, students under age 13, parents must get permission to go on, on some of these different apps. But if a district agrees to it, then that, we do it in absentia parents. So a long answer, but we want to look into this. We wanted, I'm not saying that we're not going to do, use Zoom going forward, but right now, we do have this Google Hangout as part of our suite, and there's pros and cons to both of them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Allison Anthony?
Hi. Thank you, Dr. Bodie, for that update. You've addressed some of the questions that I had, but I've got a few more. First, what is the need for Chrome back, Chromebooks versus what we have? And how sure are we of what the actual need is? Because I'm concerned about how many, the email and the response time had very limited windows, and I'm not sure we've, I'm not sure we've heard from everyone who actually needs something.
I agree. I don't think we have heard from everybody despite outreach. We're going to widen that window a little bit. We'll be putting it out tomorrow and probably close it on Monday night sometime. We, we found from this experience of this week, we really do need a day to, to ramp up. We, we were racing to get everything done. People worked last Sunday to make sure that they were ready to go. We also want to decide whether we're going to have a few locations or multiple locations. So there's a lot of decisions will be made on Tuesday, and then we'll tell everybody where to go. But to your point, I think was underlying is, do we know we're going to, even with this second distribution, reach everybody? We know, we're, we're working individual families to see if what we can do. Some, some on Monday were, were delivered to families. They couldn't even come out. And so we, we're, we're trying to do that. And I know that the high school has plans to do some, for some people who, who are quarantined, they can't leave, are going to make sure that we, we able to provide them with some kind of devices. Which will, by the way, be very clean when we get them back.
But what is the need for Chromebooks, Chromebooks versus what we have?
Oh, we have, we have plenty. We have almost a one-to-one environment in all schools, but we just don't let students take them home. I think that's something that we might think about in the future. In some schools, it's, it's more iPads, which was what Stratton and Thompson primarily, but in the last few years, because of MCAS, we have been purchasing more Chromebooks for grades three to, to 10, or actually even beyond that, they had to do retest, so that we have enough computers that we don't, we're not moving computers between grades in order to do MCAS. So we have been investing heavily in the last few years. So we do have enough. That's, my concern is really more about how do we reach everybody who needs it?
Okay.
And that's our concern.
That's good to know. The first, I don't remember if it was a school committee email or if it was a parent email, but it said something about 400 Chromebooks to distribute, and that didn't seem like it was going to go very far. But that, I'm glad to know that we have enough, and I'm glad that we're working on more distributions. To that point, I'd suggest, I think there, although parents may have access to email, some parents may have access via work, via community Wi-Fi, you know, things that are not working well right now. And I wonder if we would want to consider a robocall. And maybe not just to address this, but in conjunction with, as you move into the next phase of what we're doing for remote learning.
Yep. In fact, we, we were debriefing about this. I did do a robocall last Sunday morning to all parents. And apparently, I heard later that, I never got your call, because I heard this staff, people or parents. And IT went and looked to see what happened, and apparently it hit one caller, and the whole system went off. So some people got the robocall and some didn't. I'm going to do another robocall this time around as well, probably as a reminder, you know, I'm not going to say the Sunday night or Monday morning or something, to remind people about this. But yeah, there was a, and they don't even know what happened. It set up us the system and it hit somebody's phone and then left. It just broke down.
Okay. Okay, yeah. I was one of the ones who didn't get a robocall, so. Then another thing that I noticed as the Chromebooks were distributed, you mentioned about the issues with, with logins and stuff, but if there can be both, something supplied about how to get tech support, because the elementary school parents are just, I mean, a lot of them haven't, or some of them at least, haven't ever seen a Chromebook before. And so they get this home, and they have to log in, and they don't have their logins, and they don't, and their kids don't have an email, and it was, people are already anxious, and this just made them more anxious. And, and I know that there's ways of dealing with it, but the parents were, you know, it's, let's try and make it easier for them if we can.
I totally agree with you. We're, we're trying very hard to do that. And some parents were actually called and walked through it, and others, you know, we, we sent instructions. I'm just double checking, but I'm pretty sure we have it on the, the enrichment activity section. Mr. Dr. McNeil is on this. He, he probably, he's one of the architects of it.
Yes, it's, it's on there. If you go onto the, uh, online resources, I added it today with the information. It's one of the updates. If you go on, under online resources for parents, it will, you'll see where it says, uh, SpyPonder account information.
Yep, it's right. It's literally right in the first. This is all done by date, so it's in the March 26 update.
Okay, I'm not, yeah, I think it sounds like you're doing work on this already, but I, I agree that things need to be a little bit more organized. But, you know, I know that's under, a work in progress, so I think, let's wait and see how that goes. I had two other quick suggestions. First, I think it would be really helpful to have an overall email that addresses to parents, which addresses the things that you just told us today. Kind of the approach, the timing, the timeline to expect information from, you know, when should you be expecting contacts from parents, when, or from teachers? What's, you know, what's the ramp up going to look like?
Yep, that's a great, and in fact, that's what we are working on. That's going to go out tomorrow and, and a sort of an overall statement to parents, and then linking the back end to, you know, some of the the information here. But no, I, we totally agree that the parents need to have some in expectation, because we need their help too on this, because so, many students know to go on to their, their Google Classroom, but this is going to be somewhat new for elementary. And what we're going to have to do, it's, it's really quite various throughout the district. It's going to be very new, but it's a great tool. And we're, so when we go out, we're going to have to have parents help in terms of getting the students to, you know, to go to their, to that. And we'll, we'll give directions as well, as we educate everybody and how the kids, elementary students can access Google Classroom.
Okay. And then the other one is the suggestion that as the teachers go forward, thinking of enrichment activities and such, first, if there's any need for volunteers, and I don't mean in person, but, you know, either people who need, if they need help finding resources, or if they find resources that are useful, if there's a place that we could be sending them. And second, that as teachers are working on things, if they could plan activities that involve the community. For example, there's been some around here, someone organized a shamrock hunt. Everyone who heard about it put a shamrock in their window, and then as kids would take their daily walk, they tried to see how many shamrocks they could find. And it makes, things are really strange right now, and it gives them some interest in, in something to do. And, you know, there's ways of, if you had people just post a letter in the, ask community members to post a letter in their window, kids can go around, they can, you know, kids can use it for math, they can count them, they can do, the older ones can do graphs, you know, there, there's a lot of ways, or they can try and, the younger ones can try and see the whole alphabet, you know, it's, there's different ways of doing some things over time that are there help, you know, it, it's both educational and also kind of involves both the community and the kids.
It helps them be a very observant.
Yeah, that too.
Right.
Okay, that's all.
Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Hello?
Thank you, Ms. You're next.
Okay. Hi. So, you know, I, I do want to acknowledge that the district has done a lot with some very difficult circumstances, and something that we couldn't have predicted, obviously, months ago. I have gotten a lot of questions from parents, as I'm sure you have, about things that other districts are doing, that other states are doing. And I guess I'm still, and I know it's still being worked out, but I'm still not clear what, how things are going to look different. So the new recommendation is that there be some sort of meaningful and productive learning for approximately half the length of the regular school day. So I think one thing that parents have found frustrating is that they feel like they're just getting links. And I think that raises real equity issues, because some parents are able to take those links and be robust with them and come up with a curriculum on their own, and other parents aren't. So just, just to sort of, I'd just be curious to know how this is going to look, more teacher, more district, more curriculum leader-driven type of instruction rather than parents are meddling around. You know, not just, oh, go to these links and now look at page three and four, but something that's much more robust is I think what parents are looking for and what the new recommendation. I also note that the new recommendations do say that in some cases at the high school level, you could introduce new, new curriculum. Are you saying that you're not doing it, even though that's sort of allowed at this point? And I think the parents who express concern to me are on things like math where it's really sequential. And so if you sort of don't finish a certain amount of algebra this year, you sort of don't have the skills that you need for the next year for, or for algebra two. And so I just want to know, are there any plans to change the recommendation, to do some new material at the high school level and middle, and maybe the upper middle school level, as is now being allowed, allowed by the new recommendations?
The Department of Education is, from my understanding, and the districts that we have had the joint statement, is that they are not suggesting advancing the curriculum because of equity issues for students. Now, there are some, there are, we're having a call tomorrow with the commissioner, and we'll learn a little bit more about that. I'm not saying that this is not how we're going to evolve. At the moment, that's not what, what we're doing. There's a lot of material that can be done, looked at, and, and not everything is a link on that, on the, on the district enrichment. In fact, a lot of the stuff can be printed. And I will say that last week, we spent a huge amount of time getting packets for anybody who asked us for one of, of paper, you know, hard copies of a lot of these activities. Each one of those packets was an inch or so thick, and we mailed them to people. We mailed close to 400, I think over 400 of these paper packets, which is something that other districts honestly have not done. So yes, we're, we're very conscious of the issue of equity and be, and will all students at the high school that are in an algebra class be able to be on, continue their learning without the kind of support that they may have, or be on, be able to see a video? We are probably moving in that direction of creating videos that teach, that is asynchronous, so that you went into Google Classroom, you could see a teacher, you know, just, you know, talking about something, some concept, could be reviewing in more depth, some lessons than math that they've already had. So we're really are going to be encouraging videos that, that students can, can look at. I think that that is a very valuable way to do it, rather than just, we don't, you also see in the the DUCI regulations, they're really trying to discourage screen time too. They don't want kids sitting in front of a computer for hours and hours every day. That's not the intent of remote learning. But yes, we may be, we're, we're all trying to adapt to our circumstances right now. And I can tell you that that's not what's going on in the districts that had that joint statement right now. We are, we are looking very carefully at what might happen, should we actually have closure longer. I think that is an important issue that we're going to have to address. But for right now, this, we're, we're approaching it the way I described.
So just, what I think would be helpful to the community is to get, is for parents to get a sense of what the next few weeks will look like and how that differs from what we've seen so far. You know, as facts on the ground change, as the recommendations change, I mean, the new recommendations are that there should be meaningful and productive learning for approximately half the school day. So that, that's just going to look very different. I see, I just think be helpful to get a real clear picture to parents. You know, this is what we've done so far. This is, you know, we've, it, it's taken extraordinary effort, and it's been great, and people really came together. But now that things have changed on the ground, here's what we're going to do. And, and just make it very clear. How does that look? How does it differ from what we've seen so far? And again, I do want to sort of emphasize that there are equity issues when it isn't like directed by educators. Learning is directed by educators, because then leaving parents to sort of go through materials and figure out how to craft instruction on that are something some parents can do better than others. And so there's real equity issues about that.
That's true. There are, there are many equity issues, trying to address all of these issues in a fair thoughtful way. It's really what we are working toward. We have, we're constantly talking about this and what we're going to do. We've had, we have meetings that are going on at all levels of the school district planning. So we, we're very conscious of this issue, and we, and yes, we're going to have a, an a letter out to parents as to what to expect differently next week.
Okay, thank you. And there'll be opportunity for more questions for the round if we need, if we, if needed. Just, I just want to interject, though, Dr. Bodie, so that the, the new guidelines just came out at noon today. So there, it may actually be a two, probably will be a two-step process, right? So whatever you were planning for next week, you were already planning on, and probably already had that email to parents. and probably already had that email to parents written. But what the, what DUCI is suggesting and doctors with what Ms. Sis mentioned, the half-day of learning, the possible advancement of the high school curriculum, the direction by the teachers, maybe something that you still need to work on and roll out the following week, right?
Roll out what the following week, the, we're not doing advanced.
What's suggested by DUCI, I mean, what you're, what you're rolling out next week doesn't match up 100% with what DUCI is recommending?
In what aspect do you say, do you not see that being the case?
Are you requiring teachers to plan a half-day of learning for each student?
They are, we just got this, this information. The idea is to give students activities and things that they can do and have student choice. The encouragement is definitely to have that amount of time. And we'll be very explicit about that. Now, is any one assignment going to be, you know, three hours in a day? No, the, the ideas that the commissioner has pointed out were things where the kids actually do some exercise, too, that they, they do walks. It's, there's, having to expand the horizons on what constitutes learning is something that's very much part of this document. But I hear what you're saying, teachers are prepared to next week, make sure that they are giving some assignments out that they will, they will give feedback on. They're not going to grade the assignments, but they will give feedback on them.
Okay, thanks. I'll save my other comments for my turn. Mr. Thielman, you're next.
Yeah, thank you, Lynn. And you lent, took the questions that I had. But I want to echo what everyone else has said. This is an extraordinary situation. And I don't think any district can, can, can be prepared for something like this. It's, so I, my kudos to those in the district who are working very hard to try to continue engagement between teachers and students, which is actually the most important thing, I think, at this time. My questions are these, first of all, has the district or have you, Dr. Bodie, given some thought to, the question was alluded to earlier, what will happen? Or how we will make up 30-plus lost academic days? So for example, let's just say you have a student in Algebra I in the eighth grade at the Addison Middle School and that student hopes to either, you know, hopes to do geometry next year. How, you know, how are you going to make up those, those lost days? Or let's say, you know, whatever, whatever class it is. I'm just wondering, to what extent, you know, this is new, maybe you haven't thought about, I mean, it's probably, you probably may have people working on it. But maybe just talk a little bit about the, the work that's being done and the thinking that's taking place on, on that kind of an issue. How do you make up lost work?
Well, it's a great question and something that we have been thinking about. What, what will happen when we come back May 4th if we're, if we haven't gone forward with the curriculum that would be part of an Algebra I? One of the things that we're going to have to do, and we've already been talking about it, is creating some teams of people to look at what are the essential things that still need to be taught for that course in the, in the balance of the year. I think, I think almost many students, not all students, benefit by deepening the knowledge of what they've already learned so that they're able to learn newer concepts in a, in a faster and a deeper way. So no, we have been looking at it. I don't have a quick answer for you on what we're going to do exactly. There's been uncertainty as to really when we're going to come back. We now know it's May 4th and we'll be planning accordingly to, for that. But it does, we do wonder whether we're going to be looking up, looking at further, further closures. We don't know. And I think that's the uncertainty of all of this. But meanwhile, you have to plan. And the what ifs, if this happens, what are we going to do? If that happens, what are we going to do? And and that's the kind of where we are right now. I will say, though, the last two weeks, we've been just trying to run quickly to deal with all of the other things that we need to do in terms of getting, getting resources out there. I've had districts tell me they actually been happy because they've been able to take some of them and help. And that's great. Getting food, getting packets, we just, it's just been quite a big effort. But I do think we're going to have to look at this and be planful. And you're, you're right, you're absolutely correct. Those are exactly the kind of things we're thinking about, too.
Yeah, and I, I realize the past two weeks have been crazy and there's, there hasn't been a lot of time to think about. So I'm not assuming you've, you've figured this out, but I'm glad to hear that you're, you're thinking about it. So, I mean, it's, it's clear to me from all the recommendation, from all of the guidance from the commissioner, that we cannot advance the curriculum. It's also clear that we're not going to be grading work for credit. But, you know, what happens if you get into a situation in which, you know, a student is not doing his or her work, not handing anything in? What are the, you know, what are the ramifications? And and how do you even, how do you even enforce that? I, I'm just wondering how you approach that?
You're, you're getting the, the tough questions we're trying to deal with, too. In fact, I had several conversations about that with some members of the AEA today. What, what will we do if we have students that are not responding, not turning in any work to get feedback? I think what we, what we will do is we will out, you know, do an outreach to parents, but there's going to be a limitation to what we can do about that. And we're not going to be, none of this work is graded. So the, some, some students respond to the leverage of a grade. That's not on the table right now. But what is on the table is down the road, whether they're going to get credit or no credit, too. That's a little bit more of a lever at the, at the high school. We're not, we're not there yet because we're not giving, we're, I'm not saying we're not going to be there, but we're not there at the moment. No, you're absolutely right. What do we do? The students, it's not like you can, they're sitting in front of you and you can do an intervention. We don't have a, a good answer for that, other than we will continue to reach out to parents and to the students.
And will you, you know, will you be able to accommodate every, every individual education plan in this kind of environment where, where student work won't be graded, but it will be, or won't be accepted for credit, but it will be reviewed by teachers? I mean, we'll, we'll, are you confident that every IEP can be accommodated during this time?
No, not at all. And in fact, that's one thing that's been clear from Department of Education. We're not in a school. And so therefore, we are not going to be providing or responsible for providing all of the accommodation, everything that's been a student IEP. Are we going to try to do some support? Absolutely. We've already been trying to do that. But no, there's, this is not, this is not a replication. Now, what will happen is we'll be, certainly when we return, we'll be looking at, teams will be convening to take a look at IEPs to see, you know, what, what, where we go from there. But no. And in fact, when we talked to other districts, this is exactly the, the issue that everybody is struggling with. How do we support some students and some that are going to be, it can be very challenging to do that?
I'm, I'm assuming that the district has data on, or the name, you know, names confidentially. Obviously, the names in, of every student who doesn't have internet access or access to technology, at least if, you know, the elementary school teachers would know that for sure. But I guess my question is, do you have that data for all the students? How large is that number? And what's the strategy for making sure they get access?
Well, I'm not sure our, our data is entirely accurate in terms of who has it or not. Because an email address isn't, isn't synonymous with having internet. We have people who, and I know this from talking with some of the principals, that they know of people who really don't have it, but are not responding to outreach on this issue. We are trying to find that out. That is exactly what we're trying to find out to make sure that they do. Now, we sent out, but again, they have to be able to understand it and, and how we get it translated for them to know how to get internet service. A lot of the providers right now are giving free access to internet. But on the other hand, you've got to get somebody to your house. I mean, there's a lot of technical things that have go on in order to say that you're going to have internet. But we, it, it, it's, it's one that we don't have a totally accurate picture on. We have a good picture on it, but, but do I think that there's people we don't know? Yes, I do.
Okay. And this is my last question, Mr. Chairman. And I'll, I know I've taken up a lot of time. Have you, have you and Michael and started an analysis of any impact this shutdown or suspension of onsite learning will have on our budget favorably or unfavorably? Have you, have you, have you started to think about that at all or is not even?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Can you share your thinking with the team?
We're, we're in a very fortunate position that we're going to be fine. We're keeping track of all of our expenses that were due directly to the coronavirus. But, you know, as you know, from our budget discussions before, we, we were projecting a, a surplus that was going to be put into special education. We also have some revolving accounts that will be very helpful. But of course, one of the issues that we're also facing is that we're discussing is what do we do about fees? Because a lot of our programs and people who take after school, community education, music lessons, there's a whole, there's a lot of services we provide that are based on fees, daycare, preschool, that are the gen ed students. So what are we going to do about the fees for those programs during time of closure? I, I don't have an answer for each night, we're thinking about it. And then what is the impact on the, you know, the monies that we have to support those programs and people? One thing we've made a commitment to as a district is that we are continuing to pay everyone, including all of our hourly people, everybody, even, even long-term subs that we had had just hired. And we're beginning to do the work. We're, we're covering everyone as we go forward. And fortunately, because we had a projected surplus, I, I think we'll be fine. But we'll, we'll be able to tell you more as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, thank you. Good questions. All right, Ms. Morgan, you're up. A cool headset.
I think Mr. Schlickman is actually before me.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, that's right. I'm forgetting the table order. Mr. Schlickman, you're next. But you're on mute, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Bill, say hello to Bonnie. And so let me, you, you've gone through most of the questions in terms of connectivity and the actual technical use of the Chromebooks at home. Have we found cases where folks don't have internet access and we've been able to make connections through one of the providers?
I don't think I know the answer to that question, if we have or not. I think the only way we're going to find out is the personal contact with people. And I do know that some, some contact like that is, is definitely happening to find out. It is so, it's very important for us to figure out who needs this because they're just simply not going to be able to access, you know, any of these resources or teachers other than through email. And we can certainly upload videos to email, but watching it on a phone isn't the most desirable way to do it.
Yeah, if we're getting the Chromebooks out, I know there are a couple of providers who are offering low-cost connectivity for low-income families. And, and I hope we're able to make connections so that they're available to that.
By the way, we, we did look into buying hotspots and they didn't have any.
Okay.
They had gone, they're just wiped out. So now, maybe they're getting more. Because we would, we would be willing to get those and put them with a Chromebook if we could get them.
Okay. On, on the challenge for users when they're getting the Chromebooks and as far as signing into Google Classroom, I've often found that having a cheat sheet with screenshots working people through the process is, i- is an important thing to tuck into the packet along with that. The things that we really, I guess, are going to have trouble connecting to and figuring out. I hope everybody is doing well, our teachers are doing well, our students are doing well. But even if you're healthy through this, there's a lot of stress and involved in the social isolation. And I'm wondering how we're working maybe with our social workers or through other supports for people who might need some extra support through this, particularly if we have any teachers who live alone.
You're talking about the teachers or the students?
Actually, both. I mean, we, 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 we're responsible for both. I mean, we have to care for our caregivers and we also have to be able to provide resources for students like we normally would. I know that we have social emotional. We're, we're looking at the social emotional needs of our students on a regular basis and that we certainly would need to during this period as well.
Well, there's a lot of, I can tell you from looking at the, the email, there's a lot of going on at building levels. We've sent, Mr. Spiegel sent out, he can talk about the, how you would access resources if you were to need that. We have, we're looking into another provider to give some mental health support in situations because right now, AYCC has a waitlist of about a month. And the director of nursing and I have been looking at a possible provider. But these are all things that take time to sort of ramp up. I think in terms of individual teachers, I think that's happening more at the building level in terms of death and outreach and bringing into meetings and talking. Certainly, I'm pushing out messages, but that's not quite the same thing as reaching out. We are concerned and there's been actually a fair amount of conversation about, you know, for, for the effect of this on anxiety and just mental health and, and the effect on that with health is, is how we are going to support those students in particular. That's really more the conversations than about who, who may be experiencing a very difficult time right now. And there, there are, have been, and there will continue to be outreaches in that regard.
Yeah, please communicate with the staff that, the full committee, I know, is grateful for their work and cares about them and that we're partners with them. And we hope that they, they come through this healthy and, and, and well at the end.
Yeah. One of the things that's been interesting in our meetings when people are at home, some people have young children and, you know, they're home with their children, too, as they're trying to navigate their learning and stay professionally connected. And that's not an uncommon situation for many of our teachers who are young and have young families. And so it, it, I know they're experiencing a lot of stress in that. And we'll say, could you mute? Because, you know, they've got the children. And so I think everybody is being stressed. But the willingness, what, what is very hopeful about all of this is it's bringing up some of the best in people, too, in terms of the caring and compassion that people are showing.
Thank you.
Can I add that? So Kathy referenced the employee assistance programs we offer through the, the whole town. So any town employee has a couple of different options. We've had We've had employee assistance through All One Health for many years. And then we also, the GIC, our health insurance provider, offers their, another employee assistance program. So our employees have access to both of those for different employee assistance resources. And the GIC one has a devoted line for coronavirus. So people who are concerned about it, have, have anxiety about it or other reasons, they can call that line. And I did send out an email to our entire staff today about that. And I know that our director of school counseling and social emotional learning, Sarah Bird, has been very active with her department to make sure that they are providing the resources they need for students and staff. I know our, our school counselors and social workers are working with the students, outreach students in their buildings and sending emails to staff about resources they can, they can, they can access as well.
Great. Again, thank you.
Thanks. All right, now Ms. Morgan, now you're, now it's your turn.
Hi. So thank you. And, you know, I've been thinking as we've been sitting here talking, you know, Dr. Bodie, you started tonight talking about this sort of philosophy and this vision around how we were going to move through these weeks of school closure. And, you know, I've had the experience of being a parent of, you know, four children, one very young, a middle school student, two fifth graders. And, you know, my feeling has been over the last two weeks that, you know, the reality of it is, is that you need us parents more than you've ever needed us before. This school district needs these parents. We now have thousands and thousands, and I don't want to call us employees because we're not being paid. And we're certainly not educators because we're not very good at this. But we are having to implement what, you know, what the, what our teachers and our, you know, curriculum leaders and what, that, you know, the highest levels of our, you know, of our administration want to have happen. And, you know, I think that this is a district that really does a good job generally of communicating with its staff and with the, you know, the people who work, who work under you and, and through you. But, you know, I think that we, we need to provide more to parents and to families because we now are not dropping our kids off and picking them up and making sure that they brought their lunch or not, in my case. We're, we're, we're doing this. We're doing this work. And, you know, I think there's a lot of information, the, the FAQs are, are excellent. And, and they're, you know, they're really a good start. But I, you know, as we move into next week, when there are going to be different expectations and, and it may be harder frankly for parents to meet those expectations. I hope that, you know, we, I, I've always had this sense that we're kind of kept a little bit at arm's length. You know, that we're sort of just, you know, just like, just wait, just wait, just wait. And I think that, that we've done that and, and I, and, but I also think that we need to acknowledge that in this situation, we are playing this absolutely critical role in the education of these kids. And, and, and that we're really, really necessary. And so I'm looking forward to moving through, you know, this two-week period and then into the next period to, you know, to see how, you know, we're all going to work together to be able to do that. I have a couple of really specific, one, one specific thing that came up tonight was that you were talking about the use of Google Classroom, which I think is fantastic. I have a middle school daughter. It's great. It's easy to use. She's basically independent on that. Fifth graders do not have email. They can log into Google Classroom, but they do not receive emails. I have two fifth graders. I tried to log into their email account when we were on the meeting tonight and they don't have access to email. So Google Classroom is a lot easier to use if students can actually receive email notifications about what's on it. Hopefully that's something we can get turned on. I fully support fifth graders, fourth graders and third graders not having had email up until now. Seems like a good idea. Fully support that. But I think if we're going to be expecting them to engage with Google Classroom, they need to have some way of being notified that something has been posted. The, I'm assuming that the family FAQ will be updated after you email or as part of the communication to families tomorrow. Is that true?
Yes, that's correct.
Great. Okay. And then will information like Mr. Saunders' question, and I've had this dozens of times, you know, really clear communication about the use of either Google, Google Zoom or Hangouts? Is, can we provide that? You know, the FAQ seems like a great spot for it. It's really easy to navigate. Just I've, I've seen so many different emails from different teachers, from different parents that have conflicting information about this. I think that's reasonable. It's been, it's only been two weeks. But I'm hoping that, you know, something can be written and vetted. And, and, you know, again, we're the people on the ground who are, who are implementing this. Like I, I am for my seven-year-old. He can't, he can't zoom. He maybe will be by the end of this, but we really need to have that information too. And it seems like it's gone out to faculty, but it's, it, it has to get to us more quickly because of the nature of the relationship that we have with the kids right now. And then the really, the question that I had asked over email that I didn't hear was, is there a plan to? So this is actually my only question that I need an answer to, or even I don't know what the answer is, is whether, when medication will be available to students if they want to pick that up? Or has that already been done?
That was done. It was done the Friday, the 13th, actually. The, but if there's somebody has medication that they did not pick up, they can notify our, the, the school principal and our director of nursing and we can, we can make sure that happens. But no, that was an offer out there.
Could you maybe include that in the FAQ? Just that if they have medication?
Medication, yeah.
Just, this is the kind of time when people who have, you know, inhalers, maybe they didn't realize on Friday that they wanted it. So I, I've heard from a couple of people with questions about it. So hopefully they've already solved those issues, but it would be nice to have one. The, the FAQ is, is great and is really easy to navigate. So it seems like a really good repository for this kind of stuff.
Yeah, I think it is too. It's, yeah, we've, we've had some even kudos on it for outside the district too. And it does, and then we'll just keep updating it and, and highlight things that are new so people aren't going through it all the time too.
Great, thank you. Okay, so a lot of my questions and concerns have been covered. But I, I just want to go back to communication and structure. And I think everybody understands that this was sudden and unexpected and things are evolving. They may be evolving more quickly here than other districts. Clearly, there are other districts that are also evolving more quickly than us. I think we're probably in the middle, which is okay, as long as we continue to evolve. So the, the, the two things that I think parents are looking for is, is structure and, and communication. So it, it sounds like, and I, and I did see an F, a staff FAQ that went out today. It sounds like teachers are now going to be giving assignments, which is good. That's definitely something that the parents want. It sounds like for now, it's just once a week as a minimum. That doesn't seem consistent with the new guidelines from the state. So maybe that's something we can evolve as we go forward. But I think, but I think what we need is, is a plan, a remote learning plan. I, you know, I don't think an FAQ structure is going to get us all the way there. There should be FAQs like about why aren't we doing virtual classrooms? Or why can't we, why can't we advance the curriculum? Why can't we do this? There definitely are some FAQs that need to be answered. But the basic structure of what we're doing as a district in the next week and then the week after that is it evolves and, and changes should be in some sort of, you know, two or three paragraph document. Like what was contained within the Lexington letter, what Waldham has put out, what other towns have been doing. Just so parents can know that either maybe it's, maybe it's just once a week for now. For, for next week, it's just once a week. Maybe after that, it will be two or three times a week. Their students can be expecting assignments from their teacher, which they're expected to turn in, will not be graded, but will be corrected. And so I think that kind of cadence and that kind of clear structure is what people are looking for and it should be, you know, communicated to teachers and to parents that everybody's on the same page about what's happening. So I know you're putting out, you know, an, an email tomorrow and that will have some of this content. It's, it's unclear to me. I mean, the, the state guidance says we have to develop a remote learning plan. Doesn't say we have to, you know, submit that to the state or anything. But, and a program, it doesn't actually say written plans. And so maybe it's not required, but I, I do think that a written remote learning plan, again, doesn't have to be a multi-page document, just a three or four step, three or four step thing would be very helpful to get everybody on the same page. And I hope we can work towards that. So that's sort of my suggestion and, and as we go forward. I guess we'll go around for, for another set of questions because he builds raising his hand. Mr. Hayner, go ahead.
Thank you. One of my concerns, I've, I've been following along with Jesse and everything. They keep using the word recommend. They have the power to, to enforce. This is unusual and I appreciate it. The problem is, one, the, the state recommends, one community gets very active, has a lot of technology, does a lot of things and things start going. And my neighbor talks to another neighbor in another town. There needs to be consistency, easy to say from sitting here in a school committee, hard to do as a superintendent, hard to do as a, a state, hard to do as a nation. Parents just need to know that we're trying to do all this. I agree with everything everyone has said before. We need consistency. The state also needs to develop some consistency instead. They have yet to make a decision whether they're going to require MCAS or not. They have, I, I, I worry about seniors that have not passed it. If the state turns around and doesn't require it, do the universities and colleges accept it? What happens? We are in limbo. And I just want to thank you all, all the support staff for doing what they've done. Thank you.
All right. Since we're going around again, Dr. Allison Ampe, anything?
I was wondering if, I don't actually know how many homeless students there are in our district. And I realize now that's, I should know this, but I'm wondering if we have any and if, how we're making provisions for ensuring continuing education for them.
We are too. And this is a concern, is how we're going to, to do that. And in some cases, we're going to have to reach out individually if they're in DCF care. And that's, it's done on an individual basis. But this is, I have to say, this situation we're in isn't ideal. Obviously, it's just unprecedented. And trying to figure out how to reach all the kids that normally we just come into our school buildings and we have all the, the people, the supports, the, that are there and trying to, you know, support them in their mental health, emotional, social, academic. It, it's challenging when, and we start to realize really how special schools are that people come to them because it's really difficult to provide everything that students need in this kind of situation. And it's not going to be perfect. But it doesn't mean we're not going to keep trying and, and trying to think about how we can do better and how we can reach more kids.
Is there any, I guess, when, along with that, first, I'm glad that you're trying to reach these people individually. That's great. I'm also concerned that this situation has the potential for increasing basically the achievement gap, but I'm not talking so much about test results as the actual knowledge base and everything. And that we don't want, we're trying to minimize that and this situation has the potential for exacerbating it. And I'm wondering if there's anything else we could be doing as a district? Do we actually have additional staffing needs? Or, you know, as we figure out the next few weeks? Because I, I'm with you. I'm concerned that it may well be beyond May 4th and, and that we need to be kind of thinking longer term and doing the absolute best job we can. Is there anything else we need to be setting up to make things as best as possible, especially for our high need students?
Well, that's certainly been a focus. There's been many things being looked at. We, one thing, just the example I gave earlier, we're, we're asking special education teachers to work with teachers together on assignments to begin. And so the accommodations are part of it, not, not after the fact. Little things like that. But we are also concerned that this could exacerbate the achievement gap because some students who have resources and are also don't, are, are, are sort of very self-motivated and will find different things that they interest them and have the resources to follow those interests could be in, in contrast for students who do not and do not have the resources and do not have the supports to, to continue deepening and learn, deepening their learning. So all these things you said are absolutely correct. And, and all those things are being discussed and we're all trying to look at what ways we can make a difference in that regard. But we are limited, we're limited in so many different ways. And, and certainly the, we're, we're coming to see how important connections are digitally for some of this. And that is what we are looking at. And we, we've given, you know, some stuff out of the elementary, but it's really hard to, we'll try to do some of that a little bit at the high school too, for students that need it. But there is a lot of limitations in the situation we're in. There's no doubt about it.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry about that. I was on mute. Ms. Sees, you're next. You're, you're on mute, sorry.
Sorry, hi. I thought I had done that. Just to reflect many things that Dr. Allison Ampe mentioned, you know, it's been a very fast and ever-changing, changing situation last couple of weeks and that we expect more of the same. And whereas a week ago, we were told we couldn't do new material, now it's allowed but not encouraged. They're very well, at, at the high school level, it very well in a couple of weeks might be encouraged. And so I just want us to think, to start planning for that. Also, just to start planning for what next year is going to look like and how we can make sure that students who are, have not had access to the same resources for whatever reason, right? Can sort of join their peers and, and just start being very thoughtful and creative about how that looks starting in the fall. You know, I, I think we do have to plan for the possibility that students do not come back this year. I'd love for everyone to get back together in May, but I think we just have to plan that that may not be possible.
Great, thank you. Mr. Thielman?
So I think, you know, I think the whole world is grieving right now. I think this is this extraordinary situation we're facing. And so I, I want to thank the district and the leadership for working, trying to find as many solutions as possible to the situation we face. I would, you know, my, my counsel would be, for what it's worth, would be to try to, try to document as much of what you're doing now and try to create systems and strategies to move to remote learning in the future. Because I, I think this may be the new normal. I think there may be, you know, I, I said to somebody, I think this is like the adult Columbine. People are experiencing something they've never experienced before. And we're going to have to, as a society, get used to moments where we're going to have to go remote and use distance learning. And so I don't know. I think this is, this, this is something that may happen more often in the future in, in, in our lives than we would like to think. And so I just think it's important now to document everything you're experiencing, to think about, uh, how can we do this next time? And then to think about how can we continue learning, uh, in the future, uh, when this sort of thing occurs? Because I, I just think this with this may be the beginning of a new normal. We, you know, years ago in education, if you had told us we were going to have active shooter trainings, we thought you were crazy, right? Well, now we have that. So, um, I don't know. I think it's something we just have to be prepared for and accept and document. So no question, let's just whatever my thinking. Thank you for all you're doing and then thank the staff for all the time and effort they're putting. I think this is not an easy situation. It's not easy for parents, not easy for kids, not easy for educators, not easy for anybody. It's totally disrupting everything in our lives.
Uh, Mr. Slickman, do you have anything else? You're on mute.
Yeah, I just want to concur that, uh, I'm in awe with the hard work that everybody's done to pull this together on short notice. Keep on keeping on and we're here to support you and help us in any way we can.
Ms. Morgan, anything else from you? All right. So the last thing for me is, is, you know, we it is frustrating, I think, to parents when, you know, they look at Weston and Cambridge and other districts that are taking a didn't sign that statement and are taking a bit of a different approach, but I know we're not willing to do that, but the one, the one item that did appeal to me is that they are taking the work that's being assigned for, for purposes of a participation type grade. I don't know if there're going to be any grades issued for fourth term if we don't go back anyways, but that might be something to consider. It does seem allowed by, by the new Destiny guidelines. Um, and it may be, maybe to motivate students to at least tell them, well, if you don't, if you don't turn anything in, then your teacher is going to be calling you to find out why you're not turning anything in. Because otherwise, I think it's still going to be hard for parents to get their students to do anything for the next, in the next four or five weeks. So that's just something to consider. And thank you for all your work and your team. I know they're, they're doing their best under very difficult circumstances. It's hard not being in the same room to discuss things. It's hard, um, not having the same schedules. It's hard having your those kids and families all in the house. So thank you all for all your hard work. Any last remarks, Dr. Bodie?
No, you've all, you've expressed a lot of things that we are dealing with. It's unprecedented time. It's what's happening is disruptive for all of us and for some families, this is a very difficult time in terms of worry about loved ones too. And so that's a factor as well as anybody tries to focus on, you know, learning, you know, something more about a long division. It's, it does put our lives in a, in a different perspective as well as we go forward, but the one thing I would want to just conclude in saying is that I think parents would be very heartened to hear how much teachers and administrators care about their children and are trying their very best to, um, to provide for them educationally as well as in other ways as well.
Great, thank you. All right. So the next item on our agenda is to staff the AEA negotiations subcommittee. This is, we had left, I had just, uh, I left it open because I did not anticipate the start of negotiations until next year. I still don't anticipate the need for a committee. Dr. Bodie has been working cooperatively with the union. But I did note that, you know, in Brookline, they did have a formal MOU regarding activities during remote, for remote learning. And I thought it would be good to form, to staff the committee just, just in case it's needed. So I asked Mr. Schlickman to serve and I, I thought I would serve as well. And just a two-person committee. I did not, I do want to note that Mr. Hayner also volunteered to serve. But again, given the very short timeframe and the hopefully unlikely need for the committee, my recommendation is a two-person committee with myself and Mr. Schlickman. Um, so is there any motion or discussion?
So moved, I moved approval of the committee suggested by Chairman Carton.
Second.
Great, thank you. Uh, is there any discussion? Um, I'm not going to call names for this, but just go ahead and steal the floor if you have anything to say.
I think it's a good idea to have the committee set up and I think that's great. I'm glad you guys are willing to serve.
Great, thank you. All right. So we'll do a roll call vote if there's no further discussion. Okay, Mr. Hayner?
Aye.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
Aye.
Ms. Seuss?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
And myself, yes, as well. Thank you. And the next one is waiver of policy BDA. Basically, uh, I not necessarily, you don't necessarily need to waive it. It's, I mean, I think legally speaking, our officers, we continue to serve until new officers are elected, but it does say that our term is for one year. So I just thought it would be, be belts and suspenders to waive the policy. So if I could get a motion to waive policy BDA until the new officers are elected.
So move.
I move to waive second. I second Bill's motion.
Great, thank you. Uh, is there any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Hayner.
I just think, uh, Dr. Seuss ought to get an increase in salary for the remainder of her tenure. Twenty percent.
We do have to do, uh, any further discussion? Okay, we do have to, we are doing all of those by roll calls. So Mr. Hayner?
Aye.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
Yes.
Ms. Seuss?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
And I am also, yes. Thank you again. All right. So is there anything else, Dr. Bodie, that you would like to report on?
The superintendent's report?
Yes, yeah.
Well, as always, we have a, um, a high school building project update. All of that work continues. We had a building committee meeting on Tuesday. We had the experience of also doing this virtually. And so you, you learn a little bit about what works well and what, what doesn't work as well. And one of the things we discovered was length of meeting hasn't, is an issue as we do this. So the committee should be aware of the vote that the building committee did take on Tuesday night with regard to geothermal wells. We had a very robust discussion, um, a lot, there were four options and even some of those options were broken into parts about what we could do. Cause as you know, I reported the last time in the practice field, which is the area behind Stop and Shop, that was going to be the site for most of the geothermal wells. When they got down into bedrock down about close to a hundred feet, they found, um, some contaminant and brought some of it up for checking, but we don't know what the spread of that is. There's just a lot of risks that will go on with continuing on that site. In fact, in all these different options, I won't go through all of them as, but you know, I, I think the committee, you certainly welcome, it's a public document to see what the options were, but the range was from about a million roughly to about five million of the different options that we could entertain. Continuing that site, going off into softball field. You know, looking at the parking lot down off of Millbrook, the, um, the area potentially in front of the school. I mean, there's, they looked at all of the different options. And there were not only costs associated with all of them, there was there was delays on the project because if you, for example, uh, later on, you these buildings were built for, designed for geothermal, but now you have to change all the mechanicals on them to go to a different option. So all in all, after much discussion and much looking at this, the committee has decided to not go with geothermal wells as an option for part of the, the HVAC system, but the committee is still committed to an electric building and also perhaps the increase of, uh, energy from photovoltaic cell. And then on a motion actually by Dr. Allison Ampe, we're going to be taking a look at, you know, if we do have some savings, what would that look like? And maybe some things were on the V E list that could come back. That's all very indefinite at this point, but the, the, the issue in front of us, given this particular crisis that we find ourselves in, you know, it's really hard to see what's going to happen. Somerville, I believe, is stopped construction and as soon as you have a disruption in this cycle, we, it was just an unknown at this point. But that was a decision that the committee made. Not happily, I might add, a lot of us were, in fact, the whole committee was very, very committed to wanting to have this happen, but there's just so many reasons why it's just not going to work on this site. It's a tight site. We're trying to do so much on this site and it's just too tight to do everything we want. So I just wanted to let you know that was, was happening. I think, Mr. Carton, you were on, you were at least on the, the list of people around the, watching the meeting.
Yeah, I was, I was on for a little while to see how the, uh, the Zoom meeting was going to work.
Yeah, just if I could add one thing, Len, how do I raise my?
Of course. Yeah, go ahead.
So, um, uh, Kathy summed up perfectly exactly what we did the other night. And I also was conscious that at about this time, because I was running the meeting about eight fifteen, I started getting texts from several members of the committee telling me to try to move it along. So I, uh, so I, I punched that. Uh, the, uh, the one thing I want to add is that right now work is taking place. So the Parmenter School renovation project is going forward. We have ten to fourteen workers on site now and, um, we are planning in mid-April to have workers on the, on the front of the building, obviously all, doing some of the pre-work, pre-site work to begin the excavation and the foundation work, which is supposed to take place in June. Um, but obviously you know, we're in unknown territory and we don't know if everything will continue as scheduled right now. Is that, Kathy's about, yeah.
That's correct.
Great, thank you. Is there any questions from the committee? Though you had your hand raised, but I don't think you really meant to raise your hand. Okay. No problem.
Sorry.
Okay, no problem. Uh, all right. So consent agenda. So I am pulling out the public hearing until we, um, I consult with town council on how the procedure for holding a remote public hearing, which might be different. So I'm removing that from the consent agenda. The other items are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee requests. In which event, the item will be considered in its normal sequence, approval of warrant number two zero three two dated three seventeen twenty twenty and the amount of six nine one six three nine dot nine two.
Move to approve as amended.
There a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, Mr. Hayner?
Aye.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
Aye.
Ms. Seuss?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
And I am also, yes. Motion approved, thank you. Uh, I will quickly go through the subcommittees. I don't sure there's been much activity. Budget?
Budget doesn't have anything to report, but I do have a question. I don't understand under these circumstances. Are we supposed to continue, continue trying to do business as usual or are we only supposed to be doing kind of emergency business? And specifically, I'm thinking about the athletic fees stuff. Do we try and figure out how to make that move forward or do I just table that for now?
Uh, so there, the original guidance was to, you know, to suspend, cancel all meetings because we would not be able to have a quorum. Now that we can do remote meetings, um, that guidance was never rescinded, but uh, I think important business can be continued is my sense. I don't know that that falls under important business, but I don't know how other, how the rest of the committee feels. Ms. Seuss?
Oh, um, yeah, I, I think that it makes sense to pause that, especially since we wouldn't do anything without a pretty robust outreach to the community, which is just much more difficult to do at this point. So my gut says that that should probably be on hold.
I would agree.
That was also my sense. I just wanted to bring it up, um, since it is something that we were, we had talked about and is, you know, I should be working on that right now. So, okay, nothing more to add.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think other than, than required business, um, it probably makes sense to suspend what we can suspend. Uh, including that. Okay, uh, nothing else from budget? Uh, community relations? CIAA?
Nothing.
Thing, facilities, Mr. Hayner? Policies and procedures? Nothing. Did the building committee, calendar committee, election modification? That's it. Any liaison or reports or announcements? Mr. Hayner?
Uh, under announcements, I'm sorry to report, uh, two of the student mock town meetings have been canceled and it's unlikely that the other two will participate.
I'm sure they're going to be disappointed too. Can, I have two announcements also that I could. And one has to do with, um, our distribution of lunch program. We have decided, I actually, I have no role in this. The Arlington eats and our food service are evolving the program differently from their experience this week that we can see that some families need actually more food than what was being given at the lunchtime. So uh, it's changing tomorrow. I think it's the last day, the grab and go, and it's, it's evolving into another way to distribute food. And I do, uh, want to mention this phone number. I don't know if anybody would be listening that would. This would be helpful, but if you had the number and you knew somebody or could call for them, that would be terrific. So for the Arlington Food Hotline, the number is seven eight one three one six three four zero zero. That's three one six three four zero zero. And you can, you can just say what the need is, how many people in the family, location and bigger bags of food are going to be provided. The second announcement is that I believe we're going to go ahead with finance committee on Monday night. At least that's the plan right now, um, doing a virtual meeting. I'm not quite sure how that's going to play itself out, uh, in terms of documents or presentations. So, uh, Mr. Mason and I are in communication about that issue, but I'll send you any of the links to the virtual meeting to that still go forward.
All right, great. Any other announcements, Mr. Thielman?
Uh, you know, I don't have an announcement. I just have a question. I mean, first of all, Len, this may or may not be your last meeting, so, uh, I think it's, you're going to keep chairing the meetings and we're going to meet on, on Thursday, that next, the ninth, correct?
Uh, so yeah, so I plan to keep our scheduled meetings and there is, if there is no need for them as we get, you know, within the two-day window, then, uh, then I can, I can cancel them. I think, uh, however, uh, at least a brief check-in every two weeks is probably going to be required.
Yeah, so I would, I would say.
But just to cover the evolving updates.
Yeah, I would say one is we should meet on Thursday the ninth. And secondly, I want, you know, usually at the last meeting of the year, which was going to be tonight, which isn't tonight, we thank the chair for his work, for her work over the course of the year. So on behalf Which isn't tonight, we thank the chair for his work, for her work over the course of the year, so on behalf of all the committee, I want to thank you for being a great chair, doing a great job. Treating all of us equally and fairly, and, uh, I appreciate that, so, and.
Here's the benefit for two more months, so.
For who knows, yeah, until, until maybe. Two months, yeah, so we get to stick with you, so, okay, so we are going to meet on the ninth, thank you, I want a clarification.
Great, thanks.
Great.
Anything else? All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Thank you, uh, and roll call, Mr. Hayner?
Yes.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Ms. Seuss?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
And I'm also, yes, so this.
If I may, it's the first time in the history of this committee we've all given the same answer, thank you.
Good meeting, Len, good job.
Good job, Len, be safe, everyone.
Take care, everybody, thanks, everybody.
Stay insane.
Yes, everybody stay safe.
Stay safe and sane, yeah, I like that, take care.